With the time being, six o'clock PM on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It's very exciting to see everyone here tonight. This is the biggest crowd we've had at a school committee meeting in a very long time. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February 27th, 2024 meeting and the approval of the minutes from the March 5th, 2024 budget workshop. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second, through the chair.
Ms. Millet?
One I was at, one I wasn't at. We're voting together.
Do you want to take them separately?
Yes, please.
Sure. So I'll first entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the February 27th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Number Adam Ockel.
Yes.
Number Adam?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And the next item is the approval of the minutes from the budget workshop that took place on March 5th, 2024. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Number Adam Ockel?
Yes.
Number Adam?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. So we have a pretty hefty agenda this evening, but we're going to take things a little bit out of order in the interest of our many guests that we have here tonight. Thank you all for coming. So we're going to move into the principals' report, right? So Ms. Puliafico, can you join us?
Hello, good evening. For our first agenda item for the elementary school, I would like to introduce our Dean of Students, Mr. Matt Aronian, who has also brought with us members of our student leadership team and our news team. These are all fourth graders who have taken on some additional responsibilities within the school, and it was really under Mr. Aronian's leadership. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Aronian.
Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. It's a shared responsibility, the admin team. We came up with this together to kind of give a little bit of background with it before I introduce the students. The, when we had, last year, we had talked about elevating some students into a leadership role, so together, the admin team at camp was something called the Student Leadership Team, and we're kind of building it as we fly it. And the leadership team, the design was not only to elevate the students, but was to create role models for the younger grades. It's community and education-driven, and we try to create partnerships outside, in the school and outside the school. So a lot of the events that we do are events that help Park Ave and the community surrounding, which is really cool. The team was selected through a multi-step application process, so it started with a written application, then interviews with me, which were a lot of fun, right? And you can imagine it to being a nine-year-old, right? They think, "Oh," like it was fun. And then we broke it up into two sections, so we have a running board of student leaders, which we call the Student Leadership Team, and then we have another part called the News Team. And these guys are going to talk a little bit about that. I'm going to introduce them really quickly, too. This is Ryan Sodicki. He's part of the Student Leadership Team. Ryan actually has a pamphlet he'd like to kind of pass out. It's just some stories that got in the paper about the Student Leadership Team and News Team, and some pictures throughout the year of stuff we have done so far. This is Griffin Klein, part of the News Team. Ella Latour, part of the Student Leadership Team. That's Lillian Anthony, part of our News Team, and Fidel Konati is part of our Student Leadership Team, and they're going to speak a little bit in a second after you, Ryan finishes handing out the flyer.
Okay. So I'm going to pass the mic if my... Awesome. So this is, again, Lee and Klein are going to talk a little bit about what the News Team does.
The News Team puts together a five-to-seven-minute vote over seven hundred important local news.
Mr. Aronian writes a script in the morning, and we come prepared to learn the script and then go leave live at 8:40 AM.
Um, important segments: holidays around the world, women's rights, Black History Month, meet your custodians, meet the kitchen staff, tell us about the play.
Yep, so these guys, every morning, they come down around 8:30, and they work really hard, so I write a script in the morning. They come down, they practice a script, and they go live at 8:40. Sometimes it's successful, sometimes it's not, right? Depending on, we don't have the best equipment. We use a lot of YouTube and music that we play, and we kind of mix it all together. It's a lot of fun. They have a lot of fun. It's pretty intense in the morning for 15 minutes. Griffin or Lillian can kind of tell you more about that, but they do, they're not selling themselves, they do work really hard at that. It's important, as we get a lot of good news out there, anything from faculty news to student news to PTO events, so it's a lot of fun. Do you guys have anything else to add?
The members are Sophia Sanchez, Janelle Cruz, Franklin Reynolds, Griffin Klein, me, Lillian Anthony, and Alexa Robinson.
Right, thank you, guys. Does anybody have any questions for the News Team at all?
Through the chair. So for the News Team, what is the best part about being on that team?
Probably talking to the whole school and giving out, like, local news.
Thank you. Do you get questions during the day about the news from other students?
We had a suggestion box, but nothing happened.
No?
No.
No.
Griffin's selling himself short. He's a bit of a celebrity at Park Ave, so a lot of the kids, when I, if they're coming to my office to talk to me or drop something off, they say, "Oh, is that where Griffin, is that where Griffin sits?" Like, he's kind of a little bit of a, he's selling himself short. He's a little bit of a celebrity.
Thank you.
You think you want to get into radio and TV as you get older?
No.
I've heard your show in the morning. You do a wonderful job, so keep it, keep it going.
Thank you.
Is there a way that we can hear it live, or is it just live in the school?
Work in progress, so I'm working on that. It's just live in the school. It's very rudimentary. It's just a microphone to a speaker and a whole, so I think as it grows and it gets a little more successful, I'd like to get more stuff to kind of make it and make it live. And we've tried a couple of live shows, too, with the camera, which were kind of funky the first time, but we're working on it.
Great, thank you.
So the next is the Student Leadership Team, so I have Ryan, Ella, and Fidel, and they're going to talk a little bit about it.
The fourth grade, the fourth grade, the fourth grade Student Leadership Team was designed to not only elevate leaders from within the grade, but to have these leaders then become role models for their peers.
SOT projects are all community-based and driven. Recent projects: Rainforest Cafe, delivering holiday treats to teachers, fall recess cleanup with third grade, set design for Worcester Academy.
Other responsibilities of the Student Leadership Team: event setup and cleanup, peer assistance when entering an event, paw coins handout at events, book fairs, book fair moderating fall.
Awesome, so these guys, they plan all the events. We try to hold as many Student Leadership Team meetings as we can. It's usually during fourth grade recess, so not an instructional time. They come down on their own free will. We talk about new events to be planned. I wish we could beat more than we do, because I think they have really great ideas. But all those events, and the Rainforest Cafe, the delivering of holiday treats, though that was an admin plan, they decided that they would like to hand a lot of the goodies to the teachers, which is great. And then the fall recess cleanup with third grade outside, this was all their idea. They come together as a collective group and they kind of vote on it. The meetings are run as well as they can for nine-year-olds, right? So they do a really good job. And some of our other members are on the left over there. I'm not going to read every name, but it's an ever-growing list, so I tend to try to come back around again and add more members as time goes on, so everybody kind of gets a chance. So it's kind of, I call it rolling admission, so. But they work really hard, they do a really good job, especially with a lot of the event setting up, and the Rainforest Cafe, that was a lot of work for them, so. But that was a big hit. Kids really liked that. Do you guys have any questions for the Student Leadership Team?
Through the chair. So I would, I would pose the same question, I would ask the same question for you three. What's, you know, what's the best part of being on the Student Leadership Team? Or what are you most proud of about being on the Student Leadership Team?
Events that we've done.
What kind of things?
The Rainforest Cafe.
That was your favorite? What about you, Ella or Fidel?
My favorite event is probably the Rainforest Cafe. I think my favorite event was the outside cleanup, because it's helping the environment.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Ms. Millet?
I don't like to get invited to some of these things. It would be great to come over and see what you're doing, actually see it, so don't forget about us.
I second that. That would be great.
I was going to say, what's your favorite part, but you answered that, that was good. What do you like most about, like, the leadership part of it? Like, do you like, do you like being, like, student leaders on that? Is that even, you know what I mean?
I like it because we help teachers and kids during out the day.
I can elaborate that. They do some duties during the day, like bus, like bus duty, they'll help the kid and the girls go out to the bus. They'll, as one of the events is the peer assistance, like, so when kindergartens in first and second grade come down to events, they'll split themselves up and lead the line down and then help them sit, and they'll also monitor behavior, they'll, you know, you know, during events and stuff, so they kind of take a leadership role during those events, so.
I have seen them in action at a couple of different events. I was really impressed with the set design for the Worcester Academy that you came up with, but I've also seen them encouraging peers to, you know, behave or sit or be quiet and to hand out some paw coins. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for you to be leaders and role models for other students in the school that look up to you in lower grades. They see your behavior and how you're projecting that positive attitude and really taking pride in your events at your school. So I think it's wonderful, and I think you all do an amazing job and really appreciate all the work you're doing. So keep it up.
Well done. Any surprises that you all have found as being part of this team? Anything that you were not expecting? Pretty much what you, what you thought it was going to be like when you, when you decided to apply? What was the interview process like?
Ms. Puliafico, are they this quiet at school?
Oh, yeah.
Is Mr. A a tough interviewer? Is Mr. A a tough interviewer when he interviewed you all? No? No? Well, Park Ave proud. We're proud of all of you, and we're really thankful for all of you coming and for you bringing grown-ups in your life and siblings with you. This is an open meeting, so anytime anybody wants to come and see what goes on, there's a lot of decisions that are made in these meetings, and they happen twice a month, so the more involvement we have from our community, the stronger we all are. So, thank you all. Thank you for coming and for all of the great choices you make every day and inspiring all the rest of the kids at Park Ave.
You're wonderful role models.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, moving right along with the agenda, quick little change of chairs here. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli. Do you want to finish now, Ms. Puliafico?
Time purposes.
No, if you'd like to finish now, then...
I just didn't want to just rely on the children to carry me tonight.
Yeah, why don't we continue with your report? Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
In addition to the climate and culture that our Student Leadership and News Team brings, we've had a couple other events. We've had, we had a bullying assembly on February 28th by a presenter named Jason Tardy. He does a lot of juggling and stunts tied in with bullying messages around what to do if you see bullying, how to be an upstander, how to help your friends, how to create a safe and supportive environment within the schools. We also had some professional development around trauma-informed practices. That is our second session, and we will have a third session continuing in April, so we're doing quite a bit of work around that with our staff. Under Curriculum Instruction and Assistance, we had NATE participation, which informs our nation's report card. So our fourth graders, 50 randomly chosen fourth graders participated in that assessment, so when you see the nation's report card come out, you know that we are represented as well. And we are currently preparing for MCAS, which starts in April. Our third and fourth grade take ELA and math, so we have ELA in April and math in May. And then some community items. We had Community Reading Day. Several of you came to read. We had over 60 readers, so that, of course, is a big shout-out to our academic interventionist team and reading specialists who put that together. So we had fantastic representation, not only from other departments here in Webster, which was greatly appreciated, but also other businesses in Webster and even outside. Some local colleges sent students to read as well. It is a great opportunity and a really fun day for all of our students. We are also hosting, for some of our students, some of our multilingual students breakfasts in the morning to bring them together with each other, to be able to see that there are other students who come speaking their native language. So we have had our one where our Portuguese students all came together, had breakfast together, were able to converse with each other, play some games, and we've also had our early grades, Spanish-speaking students together, and we will have our higher grade, three and four, Spanish-speaking students for breakfast this Friday. So that was brought together by our ELL team and our family liaison, Westy Olivera, to bring all those students together, which is great. And finally, we are getting ready for our Real Madrid Soccer, which is starting up. Signups are just getting ramped up, so it is a great free program presented by Real Madrid. We're hosting, we'll have about 40 students signed up. We had basketball in the winter, which went really well through the grant. We are also able to fund a late bus, which is a really big piece for a lot of our families. We had a lot of kids sign up for the late bus, so we anticipate great participation in our soccer program as well. So thank you to Tony Parento for bringing that about, and our coaches, Peter LeBlanc and Brandon Stand, who will be overseeing that, so. And our basketball coaches, Ramone Canty and Sean Heatherman, and they did a fantastic job with that program. So we're excited to have it back for soccer, and I think our kids and families will be, too. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Puliafico, for your updates. Exciting to see Real Madrid coming back for soccer. I know the little guy behind you participated in the basketball and loved every minute of it, and a big shout-out to Ms. Canty and Mr. Heatherman, they were awesome. And it's a great feeder. I know, you know, town sports, sometimes the numbers can be a little bit low, so it's really great to expose kids to these sports and in a way that is free of charge for families and gets them where they need to be afterward, so.
And additionally, the messaging of Real Madrid is really great around teamwork and good choices, so it's more than just your typical athletic team. It has a lot of strong character qualities tied into it as well.
That's great, yeah. I love the breakfast, too. Great, great updates. Any questions or comments?
Through the chair. I just want to clarify, will the Real Madrid grant for soccer also be enough to pay for a late bus for the kids? Oh, good. Okay.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee from Ms. Puliafico?
I just want to give Ms. Puliafico a huge shout-out. There's so many wonderful things happening on a regular basis at Park Ave, the student involvement, there's a buzz when you're over there in the morning before school, seeing the breakfast was just wonderful, having the kids sit there, communicate with one another, talk, have fun. Wes is, she's a dynamo with her engagement and the way she's getting families involved in the outreach, so there's always something going on at Park Ave, always, and that takes effort and a lot of time and a commitment from the staff and the administration, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Let's see here. The next item on the agenda, going back to order, is the Superintendent Report. Good evening again, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. First thing I have for you tonight is a personnel update. We had a new hire, a custodian at Webster Middle School. That is Kevin Dyer. He has started, I believe, yesterday. So it is his first...
He was sub before that.
Yep. So welcome, we're happy to have him onboard and be full-staffed again. And then tonight, I'm excited to have here tonight our new curriculum, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Debbie Rivera. I asked Debbie here tonight to give herself a little plug and an introduction and wanted her to meet the school committee. And you can grab the mic and just hit that button.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for inviting me to be here today. I'm really excited to be meeting, you know, the school council. So I'm really excited to have joined Webster Public Schools, just to provide you with a quick overview of my experience and, you know, and I've always been very passionate about education. I've been in education as a teacher, teacher coordinator, a coach, Director of Curriculum Instruction in Adult Transition Services, Associate Director of Education in multiple settings, including public schools. I was in Webster Public Schools for 16, 17 years, something to that effect, and then also in collaboratives as well as private special education schools. And now coming back again to being the Director of Curriculum Instruction, which has always been one of the areas that I've been very passionate about, I think that providing the students with the supports that they need, it's what is going to help students not only engage and learn, but also be able to take those skills, transferable skills, and apply them in different settings. And I think that all of that begins with, again, providing the students with the supports and appropriate curriculum that is all evidence-based, and also that supports their individual needs, which I think is really important for all of our students, and also looking at each one of them individually. I'm really excited to be here in the Webster Public School team, and I'm looking forward to getting to know everyone and helping to contribute to the amazing work that has been done so far, so thank you very much. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Welcome, Debbie. Your rich background is going to really benefit Webster. We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
She has not hesitated to jump right in. We're very excited to have her onboard, and I'm really excited about the direction that we're headed. Thank you. That's all I have for Personnel Update. Next, I have Instructional Leadership. So on February 28th, Wednesday, we continued our monthly DILT meetings. Those are strictly, again, focused on instruction only. As you know, the district changed models this year. We used to have our district leadership teams, and in those teams, we talked about everything from normal day-to-day business, budget, anything that was requiring ongoing support. But this year, with the support of our SaaS team, our state partners, we have moved to a different model, so one meeting a month. We have a regular DLT, which talks about ongoing issues or any needs or updates that we do as a team, business more of what's going on in the schools, and then our third meeting of the month is a DILT, and that is basically all instruction only. Our SaaS partners come in, and we are really trying to model the work that is going on in our schools and how we, as a leadership team, can transform and make sure that we have systems in, systems in place to support the instruction that's happening in the building to improve that Tier One instruction. So, you know, some of the work that we do is we bring in, we look at student work, we pick it apart, we say, what standards are they teaching? You know, are we meeting our instructional priority? How are we targeting that? Where's the work coming from? And then we rip it apart, and then our principals take that back to the schools and they model that for their instructional leadership teams. So there's a continuum, coming down and coming back up with that feedback. So the work is ongoing, that is our model moving forward. We will continue doing that work, and it's really rewarding and good work that we're doing. And that continues into my next point, which is our regularly scheduled walkthroughs as part of our DILT. That is something that we continue to do. We join with our SaaS partners, and we are continuing to gather data and create an environment where we're giving regular feedback to our staff. What we're trying to do is promote, you know, feedback can be difficult, and sometimes that feedback is felt like it's coming off in a negative way. And what we're trying to do is create a feedback where there's a growth mindset, that we're always looking to improve and better, better our practices. And it's not about, you know, what can we add on, it's about what can we do differently? How can we change to improve our practices? And that is the whole purpose of our learning walks, gauging where we're at, what are we doing, what do we need to work on, what are the positives, what are the glows of our walks, and then where, where can we grow? And so, you know, that's the model that we're trying to prove, is a constant feedback, a growth mindset. growth mindset. And I think that's where we're going to show our gains, by continuing that work. Are there any questions on that? No? And then, which kind of leads us into the next topic. On Friday, March first, I met with our first Webster Middle School focus group. That group was made up of students from each grade level. Some of the questions were, I asked them about how they felt about their engagement in school, were they happy with the learning environment, what would they like to see differently? Do they feel like there is a safe person in school that they could go to if they need somebody to talk to? And I was concerned that the students would be quiet and really not engaged. I wasn't sure what to take, and I could not stop them from talking. After an hour, I'm like, okay, we're going over. And I'm like, do you guys want to leave? And they're like, no. And so they stayed another fifteen minutes and talked, and it was, you know, something I was really excited about, something I plan on continuing doing. I already have a team from the high school that I will also be meeting with the high school. It was just me and the students talking, and it was really informative, and I learned a lot, which is something, and it really correlates to the work that we're trying to do in-house. I mean, we keep talking about engagement across the district, and, you know, when we walk into a classroom, what do we see? Are the students engaged in their learning? Are they active participants? Are they investing and driving in their learning? And when I spoke with the kids, you know, I said, what would you want? You know, what could we do to make school more exciting? And they said, we need more hands-on activities. We need more engagement. We need more, we need, we want to be active participants. We don't just want worksheets. We don't just want to sit there and work in silos. So it was really interesting to get their perspectives on things, and I think, you know, if you want real information, you got to go to the source, right, sometimes? And I think this feedback was very beneficial. It was beneficial for me, and I think it's beneficial for the work that we're doing. And I was just really impressed with the level of engagement from them, talking as a group, as a whole. They were saying, can I piggyback on his comment? Can I, you know, add a little bit more to that comment? And, you know, at the end, I thanked them for their time and their willingness to be open. It was a safe space where we could talk and be, you know, be free about our comments. One of the students thanked me for coming down, and he felt like, I think his exact words were, I really appreciate you coming and hearing from us. That means a lot. It's important that somebody cares what we think. So, so I was just really pleased with that and took their comments very seriously, and we're definitely bringing that back to the team, and we'll continue that work at the high school. I look forward to their comments, and I hope to make this a regular process with our students. Any questions about that? No. Another updates. On Tuesday, March fifth, we had our MSBA kickoff meeting. The MSBA runs through the status of projects and reviews the upcoming modules. The MSBA breaks the project down into eight different modules, and you can see them in the notes. I didn't realize it when I was typing these up, that we're almost at the last module. I couldn't believe it. It starts with eligibility period. Number two is the project team. Three is the feasibility. Four is schematic design. Five is the project scope and budget. Six is design development. Seven is construction administration. That's where we are at now. And the next phase is the project closeout. It feels like, oh, gosh, it feels like we've been doing this for five years and maybe close to that already, but it's really becoming exciting and something we're living every day, and it's really so nice to see that planning and that time and that commitment come, come, come to the construction part of the project. So what the MSBA did is they came in, they reviewed Module Seven. They want to make sure they'll have check-ins that, with us, to make sure that it remains on track, meets the expectations of both the school district here and the MSBA, as they defined in the project funding agreement. And then on that same day, on Tuesday, March fifth, we also had a meeting with our building administration from the middle school and the high school, along with our OPM, the design team, dispatch, EMS, fire, police, and school nurse. This was to review overall building safety and to make sure that we're all on the same page in the event of the emergency. Again, we want to make sure that we have all our bases covered, that we're all speaking the same language, we all have the same expectations. We wanted to make sure that we had all public safety in the building to walk the building so they know what's blocked off, what's active, where our new egresses are, what our campus looks like, and it's important to keep the middle school informed of that as they're on the same campus. So in the event that we have to, you know, evacuate or have a drill or something when we leave, that we all know which direction that we're going and what the expectations are. So we were happy to have that meeting. And then on Wednesday, March sixth, there's so much going on. This was, it was a pretty awesome couple of weeks with a lot of great news. I received a call from our Project Lead the Way Coordinator, Michelle Bigelow, and our Gateway STEM Teacher, Ms. Kate Birdy, who both had teams that were selected by the industry professionals and the One Eight and Applied Learning Hubs Student Industry Connect Programs. Our schools have submitted twenty-nine projects to the Student Industry Connects Program, and I'm very proud to say that two groups, one from the high school and one from the middle school, won awards, and their projects were recognized. The high school students, Eric Vavatich and Michael Pagan, were award winners for high school engineering, and they had submitted their automatic guided vehicle project, and the industry volunteers were impressed by their hard work, their creative solutions, and their polished presentations. They both won summer internships with Workbase Learning Alliance, so congratulations to them. And then the middle school gateway award winners were Madison Derry, Angela Sarfo, Ava Reed, and A.J. Perron for their project on automation and robotics helping hands, AR helping hands. Students made a food pet dispenser and a virtual pet. And in recognition of their achievement, Medtronics will host their class for a visit to the Robotics R&amp;D Center in Boston this spring. So that was really exciting because this is our first year with our Gateway program. As you know, that was something that Ms. Chapdeline worked very hard on over the summer to get that up and running. Ms. Birdy went through extensive training over the summer, gave up a lot of her weeks in the summer to be trained for this course. So we're really proud of the work they're doing. And then this work is going to continue into the spring. The students who won that, along with eight other Webster Middle School students, will be going into Boston for a competition called the One Eight Hub Spring Showcase, where they're going to compete with students around the state. The high school is also taking six teams to compete, three from the healthcare pathway and three teams from the advanced manufacturing pathway. And we're very excited to see our pathways in action and look forward to hearing more about their accomplishments. They're doing some pretty amazing work in those pathways, and you can tell all the hard work is paying off. So I just want to congratulate all of them, Michelle, everybody who's involved in that pathway, for their work. It's awesome to see in action. Any questions about that? No? You weren't reporting on, were you reporting? Under. The district also had twenty-one seniors sign up for Senior Scoop, which is a specially-created job fair for seniors not going on to college. These seniors have been participating in four employability skills workshops, which include resume building, interview skills, exploring resources for your future, and navigating the job search. This job fair is being held at Polar Park on April twenty-third, and this is also being led by our Project Lead the Way Coordinator, Michelle Bigelow. And then on Thursday afternoon, our Webster Middle School Unified Basketball Team played in Auburn. They played again on this Monday. I had to miss that game. I'm bummed. But I wanted to give a shout out to Assistant Principal Mary DeCoursey, middle school staff, there were student volunteers there, along with our Athletic Director, who showed up for their efforts with this program. It was heartwarming to see our students on the courts, supporting one another and playing basketball. So I'm really excited about that. I didn't even put it in the report. And lastly, I am very happy to announce that this year Superintendent Scholar is Angel Marian Kinsaris. Angel is an eighteen-year-old Latin, and these are Angel's words. She passed her bio on to me, so I'm going to read it on her behalf, and I hope to have her here at the next school committee meeting to meet you. Angel is an eighteen-year-old Latin American senior who is second in the graduating class of 2024. Angel moved to Webster as a sophomore in her third year, in her three years at Bartlett High School. Her achievements include high honors and honor roll all four years, the Frederick Douglass and Susan B. Anthony Award, and the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Angel takes part in volleyball, drama club, a cappella, and class officers as a part of her school activities and hobbies. To quote Angel, she stated, "My studies are my priorities, and I am more than beyond grateful to be offered these experiences like this because of them." I'm really excited to go, Principal Collins, and I will be heading on March twenty-first to the luncheon. We look forward to celebrating Angel, and I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to meet her. I know she's somebody's bestie over here, but she is just a delight and a wonderful young lady, and she is a great representation of Bartlett High School. So I'm excited about that. And that concludes my report.
What a great report, Mrs. Prangeli.
It was honestly, it was the best two weeks. There was just so much going on. You know, the Community Reading Day, the breakfast at Park Ave. It was just one of those weeks where I couldn't be everywhere, and I wished I could have been everywhere because there was something positive happening today. It was at the middle school. There are more projects going on in Project Lead the Way because as they cycle through, kids are now coming in and they're doing the same projects, and we're invited over there to go in, have the kids present to us, talk about their ideas. Today, they were talking about green initiatives. This morning, they were building houses for Taylor Swift and, you know, Michael Jordan and using renewable energy, making wind turbines and solar panels and bar seats out of basketballs. But it's great to see the creativity and to listen to them speak about it. It's just, it was really, the news was just, the last couple of weeks have just been wonderful. I can't say enough. I could keep talking, and I won't because you'll be here till ten o'clock.
As long as it's good news, we'll stay. Big shout out to Angel Marian Kinsaris for earning the Superintendent Scholar. Ms. Birdy and Ms. Bigelow and their students and teams for Project Lead the Way, great stuff happening. And I know the Community Reader Event is one of my favorite events that happens. So lots of great things. Thank you for sharing all of it. So, and thank you for your updates.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee, from Mrs. Prangeli?
Through the chair.
Ms. Mellon?
I just want to say, since I live close by, I drive by here a lot, and there's been a lot of action going on. I mean, yesterday, it was bulldozers and everything else out there. I can't even imagine what's going on, on the inside because they've been pretty busy on the outside.
It's active, and we have spent our time, and, you know, Mr. Collins going from meeting to meeting, answering question to question. We're really digging, digging into the work now, but it's wonderful, but there's, there's a lot, and it's, it's time-consuming to work through this, but it is really exciting to see happen. When you walk in, and we peeked in the auditorium, you couldn't even tell it was the auditorium anymore. It's pretty gutted out in there, so.
Yes.
They are not wasting time, which is, which is a good thing.
I had, both my sons graduated from Bartlett, and I was showing them the pictures, like the auditorium, and they're like, oh, my goodness. I'm like, yes, it's gutted already. So we can't wait to see the finished project.
Yeah, we will really try to keep as much updated online as we can with pictures and slideshows of the progress of going through. We try to keep our Building Committee page updated, but we'll make sure we're very active in doing that because it's exciting to see. You know, it wouldn't be happening if it wasn't for our community. So we appreciate the support, and we want them to be engaged in what we're doing, see the work that's happening.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. I think that's a great segue to give some more updates relative to the renovation project. So in addition to the couple items that the superintendent mentioned, I'm going to share a few other key activities that have been going on that I think you might want to be aware of. We did a site walk last week with the Chair of the Conservation Commission, and what we did was we walked around the property, the whole campus, to identify trees that we would be retaining, removed, and/or pruned across the entire campus. During that walk, some additional erosion controls were requested, so when you come into the campus and you bear right at the B as you come along that way, there was a request to put up some additional silk screens up there. In addition, we did some cleanup on the stairs that we showed you in the slideshow from the last time. So treads were added, handrails were put on there. Work has been ongoing in preparation for the chairlift. Most recently, some electrical panel work was done over this past weekend, and I just learned today, which is really good news, that we believe that the chairlift will be operational by next week, and we're hoping that the inspection happens on Tuesday. That's tentative right now. We're really dependent upon the state to confirm that. So over this weekend, the temporary walls that were put around those chairlifts will come down, we'll put some cones around them, and we're actually planning for some training on Monday, ideally, with a number of staff members so that they know how to operate the chairlift once it's up and functional. So getting really excited for that. We also are working on with National Grid to get another meter put up, so there'll be another meter that'll attach to Section C, and all of that construction electricity consumption will be absorbed by the project itself while the construction is going on. Actually, there was a red truck that was coming around campus for several days, and they were actually videotaping all the drainage lines and getting clear understanding about where those pipes go, what they lead to. They did complete all of those activities. We're getting that sent off to the town engineer to review so that we can continue moving forward. One of the other things that we're planning for is as more subcontractors come on site, we don't believe we're going to have enough parking in the back parking lot. So working with Carol Marshon at the Town Hall, we were able to secure George Street Field, that parking that's across from the field, for overflow for those contractors. We haven't started using it yet, but we expect over the next month or so that we may have that overflow. And demo activities continue. We believe we're going to get the full go-ahead next week to go full force with the abatement activities that we thought were going to start last month. There's always ongoing conversation. We do meet weekly with the OPM, with the architect, and with the contractor. That's a weekly meeting. We get all kinds of updates. So what we'll do is as we go forward with this meeting, we'll give you what that look ahead looks like and what's coming up, as well as what's been completed so far. What I can share with you is that Brait is very aggressive in keeping the schedule moving, really working with those subcontractors to make sure they have all the information that they need, that they're addressing any dependencies or constraints within the project so that we keep things moving and there are no delays. I've been very impressed with them so far. Let me stop there and see if there's any questions? It's exciting times. We're in the trailers now, too, so that's kind of nice. All right. So let me move on. I have just one brief maintenance update for you to be aware of, is the water heater, sensor, and igniter actually failed at Park Ave. That water heater's only three years old, and that sensor has failed now for a second time since its installation. So we are working to follow up on whether or not that's all covered under the warranty, and we're going to be investigating that to get that addressed. But no doubt, we needed to get that resolved because we need hot water in the schools. Any questions?
Through the chair. Sorry, to go back to the trailers. Do you have electricity in there yet?
We're still running off of a generator right now.
Okay.
And that generator- And that generator does not turn on until 7:00 in the morning.
Yes.
Thank you. They're hoping within the next couple of weeks, they're at the mercy of National Grid, and we don't have a confirmed date for when they're going to connect that. Good question. And my last update is a food services update. And so, just so you're aware, about a week and a half ago, we celebrated National School Breakfast Week. That is a celebration that's observed annually during the first week of March, and it's part of the federal school breakfast program. The program itself is intended to raise awareness about healthy breakfasts and starting your day with a nutritious meal, to really fuel your energy for the full day. So what we did during that week is we offered taste tests for some new potential menu items, like yogurt cups. We had some whole-grain granola. We also rewarded students who attended and received breakfast with some themed highlighters, bookmarks, stickers, and some pencils. Also, any student who received breakfast all five days was rewarded with a small prize incentives. And then students were also provided with some additional refreshments throughout that week. What we are planning to do is follow up with the students and actually conduct a survey around breakfast and lunch and the offerings that we have, as well as our teachers, to get feedback on what we can continue to do to improve the offerings or augment them, where there's a recommendation that, that would be suitable. I want to give a big shout out to Kelsey Sanders, too, and her team. They really do an excellent job with the multitude of meals and what they're serving on a daily basis. Any questions?
Through the chair.
Ms. Mellon?
Forgive me if I missed this, but it's mentioned in the business report that you had a safety meeting.
Oh, actually, I didn't, I didn't dive into it, because the superintendent covered it, but we did have the safety meeting. So that was one of the other things that we did last week, is we had all the first responders here. In addition to that, we had our building administration, the school nurse, head custodian, the athletic director, and we walked through and explained what changes were done in the building. We walked through where the egress was, what kind of questions that our first responders might have of the construction team. Some of the things that we talked about is, you know, what will be the signal or the protocol should a situation occur in the construction zone? How will they notify administration if, in fact, there's an injury there, or perhaps maybe a fire that starts? How will we handle those kinds of situations? How will the first responders have access into the construction zones? So we, we did a sort of what I'd like to call a table talk walkthrough of those activities, and then we gave all of the first responders a tour through the building, so they know how the layout has changed. And then from that point on, we're working on updating our evacuation plans. We're going to do a small little test first, and then we're going to do a full drill within the school.
And I'm sure that's going to be a constant reevaluation, since construction's constantly changing.
And so that's something that's going to change as we go through the phases, certainly. So this is going to be ongoing updates to the evacuation plans as we move through. But first and foremost, is getting the first one done, so that they understand which way they would go in the case of an emergency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Kontos, does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for those updates. The next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative. Good evening, Mohamed.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so I have quick three to talk about. First, I wanted to talk about the OSHA training, the OSHA beer-based training that's happening. And one of the things is OSHA training, and then TIP certification training. So in the biomed class, and the science classes, and also the marketing classes, they're doing OSHA training. So students got trained on OSHA and OSHA certification and like, safety in the workplace. I've taken the course, and it was like, really quick, like, it took like, a week, and like, the teacher set it up really easily, so I loved it. And then the TIP certification one is a relatively, like, new thing that happened. It happened this year, and I also did that one, too. It happened in a newer class called Hospitality and Tourism. It's part of the marketing pathway. Yeah, it just, it just gives you like, more job opportunity in the future. I want to, is it open? Okay. Maybe I should get closer. Is that better? Ooh, okay. I just thought again. Okay. And then I want to talk about March Madness Beer Week, which the NHS students designed or came up with ideas for the days. So on March 1st, there was Neon Day, it's every Friday, and then March 8th was Fancy Friday, so you had to dress up fancy. March 15th is going to be Stadium Jersey Day, or favorite sport team or concert jersey, wear any. And on March 22nd is Tacky Tourist Day. And my last thing is on the Quinn, on the QCC Decision Day, I'm glad to say that 26 seniors were accepted on the spot, and I'm just really proud of them, so congratulations. Yeah, those are all my updates.
Excellent. Well, thank you for those updates.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mohamed? No? Okay, looks like you covered everything. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
The next item on the agenda under Old Business is a monthly report on fundraising applications. As a reminder, it's the role of the school committee to review fundraising applications, but we don't approve them. Those are done at the building level. Any questions or comments about fundraising? Looks like we had a student and staff basketball game that happened at the middle school. And PBIS is going to be selling some sweatshirts at the middle school. And we also have a community dinner that's coming up at Bartlett. That's on the 27th, right? So that's, that's actually, this is a good opportunity to get some airplay for that, I think, right?
Love.
Go for it. You have a mic?
We have, we have two events, actually. During the day, we're hosting a egg hunt for the students with their Bartlett bucks that they can buy tickets for. And then at night, that night from 6:00 to 8:00 on the 27th, we have a dinner and egg hunt for the community. We've posted all over, everywhere, so they can, people can sign up for your QR code. You don't have to have your kid, you don't have to have kids to come. We'd love to have everyone. We're going to have raffles and, and a bunny is going to arrive. Just a lot of fun for the kids in the community, hopefully.
Sounds great. What's on the menu? Do you know yet?
So we have, Point Breeze has donated the pasta meal, and Monte Bianco's is donating the other half of the meal.
Oh, amazing.
Balls and salad for the event.
Oh, great. Okay, sounds like a good meal. $5, that's all? That's amazing. Get out there, everybody. All right, so that, that does it for the fundraising applications. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is the third and final reading of policy EEBAA, multi-function school activity vehicle. Mrs. Prangeli, anything about that?
I'm actually going to take this one. I want to just point out a couple of things for the committee. This is the final reading, however, as I've been working on building some of the procedures and the process behind this policy, I've been doing a lot of research and looking at a lot, what a lot of other schools do, and as I was doing that, there were some things that I discovered relative to the policy that I thought were really important, and, and I think something for us to consider adding into the policy. So what you'll see in your packet is obviously the original policy, but it's marked up in red line with some additions in there that bring some better clarity in a few areas, as well as expand on some of the purposes in how this policy applies for the usage of the activity bus. There's probably, in my research, I've probably found about six or seven other communities that have this, and this is, as I was reading and comparing policies and procedures in terms of how they administer it, look to incorporate some of those suggestions into this policy for the committee to consider. I think some of the key things that were added here is around usage and expectations, but in particular, I think it's key to understand that this bus is not intended to replace any fixed routes that we have and that we use for regular transportation, nor should this bus be used to transport kids if, in fact, they miss a bus or they do something like that. So I think that brings better clarity to the policy about its intended use. So I know that was a change. This was supposed to be a final reading. So with that said, certainly understand if you want to take some time to take a look at this and digest it, given that we added some additional clarity to this.
One, one minor comment that I have, that it didn't occur to me until now, I'm seeing this section in red, is the, what page am I on? Page two, where it says employees may not operate the district vehicle under the influence of alcohol, illegal drugs, CBD, it goes on and on. I recommend we just take out the word "illegal," and there's two areas. We don't want people on really any legal or illegal substances. And you, you do go on to say prescribed or not, that impairs their ability to drive, but I recommend just removing "illegal" out of those two bullet points.
So the fifth, fifth bullet from the bottom? I think that's the one.
Fifth and, fifth and fourth from the bottom.
Okay.
Any thoughts about that? Any other questions or comments with regard to this policy?
And please, if you feel like you want to wait one more meeting to approve, that's totally your comfort level, whatever the committee chooses.
Do we need a motion, or we just can be, that's the third and final reading, there's no motion here, right? Oh, okay. What's the desire of the committee? If there is a motion, I will entertain it to approve this policy as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve it with the additional change that was pointed out this evening.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you for the additional diligence on this policy. It looks more comprehensive and good catches. The next item on the agenda is an update on FY '25 budget.
Thank you. Lisa and I will tag-team a little bit here. So as you know, we have been waiting to hear the town administrator's budget. Last night, we were asked to attend.
Finance committee.
A finance committee meeting? I'm sorry, I forgot. I think it's not. Well, you know, I took my glasses off, and there we go. It's amazing what happens when you put your glasses on. So we attended the finance committee meeting last night, and he discussed his budget. So we were giving final numbers from the town. What they are asking for is, they are asking us to reduce an additional $554,142. So as you know from the slide, we started with a 7.09% budget. We then brought back to the school committee, we reduced the budget by $451,000, and presented a budget on February 13th in the amount of $27,315,720. After looking at town revenues, where we are with insurances, shared costs, the town administrator is proposing a budget with a reduction of $554,142, to put us at $26,761,578, which would represent a 3.21% increase from last year's budget. So a reduction from what we were planning on our, you know, our 5.35% budget, but I know everybody is seeing reductions around the state. I think, you know, the admin team will need to go back and do some work. As you know, we have been doing work and having conversations around it. Now that we know the absolute numbers from last night, we will be meeting again to hopefully finalize some recommendations for you at our next school committee meeting, with the hope of making that our approved budget to move forward.
Want to add anything?
I think the only thing I'd add is last night at the finance committee meeting, it was a public hearing. All the department heads across the town were there. There were no members of the community there, so we weren't able to get a pulse on, you know, what is the community and the citizens thinking about what's being proposed. But what I will share with you, as what I see coming across my listserv as a business manager, is that there are districts in very different situations, some who, through the calculation itself, if they dropped one bracket within the low-income group, some of those communities are seeing a drop of about $1 million in their budget. And so while I think the superintendent did a great job last night in communicating how disappointed we are and where we're landing with receipts overall and funding from the state for Chapter 70, the only thing I can be grateful for is that we're not in the same situation as some other communities who took a big hit in, in their budgets year over
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee with regard to the budget update? I know certainly, tier-one instruction and, and teaching our kids, it remains our priority, and, you know, we are, we're not facing a reduction in the funding that we currently have. We are still looking at an increase in order to keep positions that we have, and, you know, certainly, I know that there's some, some difficult decisions that are being made that really center around student achievement and ensuring that the students have what they need to be successful. So I have every faith that those discussions will continue at the building level and at the district level, to make some of the, the decisions that we need to make with regard to educating our kids, which is really, you know, we had some, some students here earlier, and lots of discussion around the things that are going on at all the schools, and I think it's a good reminder that those are our customers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if it wasn't for, for the kids, it would just be, just be buildings, and we'd just, you know. So I remain hopeful and grateful for all of the work that's going into determining how we're going to move forward.
It's not easy, and we've been very fortunate over the past few years with funding that we have had. We haven't really had to say no, which is wonderful. We've, you know, we've put the money to good use, and we've invested in our school community. We've invested in our resources. We've invested in our staff. We are continuing to work on making progress, working on our instructional priority, really honing in on our tier-one instruction and improving that, and what that takes to make those gains. So we are committed to that work as a team. We're having hard discussions. We, we put everything on the table. Nothing was off limits to talk about and to look at. So it's, it's challenging work. It's hard work. But the reality is, there's only so much money to go around, and, you know, it doesn't help us to fight against our local safety departments and our departments within our own community that is never productive. If we can get a balanced budget forward, what I feel like we're doing, you know, did we want more than 3% yet? Did we feel, everybody is valued here. There is nobody that is not valued, and there's nobody that's not important. But every department feels that way, you know? So we do the best we can, and, and, you know, our goal is making sure that we are moving this district forward, giving the students what we need, and improving our instruction. So we will continue to do that work, and we will definitely have a budget for you at our next meeting with, with a recommendation to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? The next item on the agenda is discussion and approval of the Bartlett High School 2024 to 2025 Program of Studies. Good evening, Mr. Collins and Ms. Neves.
Good evening. So we want to come before you this plan, another school of offering students. So we want to come before you this plan, another school of offering students. It is, of course, coming off of, right now, balancing courses that we have. But we do have all of our courses, new and old, updated. Ms. Neves and a team of stakeholders at the school have worked diligently throughout many school days in the past few weeks to align this program of studies to, one, be more up-to-date with where our students are going, in terms of our pathways, in terms of elective options, and of course, in terms of what is needed in terms of course selections, whether it be college-level, or it be honors, or it be one of our pathway courses that gain them extra quality points, things like that. It went through with what I would say a fine-tooth comb, and she is here this evening to just outline a couple of changes of things that have come from their work, and we are asking that if we move, when you, if you move to approval this evening, that we would then ask to come back again, because we do have a wonderful group of teacher stakeholders who are working in the building, that meet on their time, that they're working on a school grading policy that is concrete, that is equitable, that is fair, and they are going to be presenting that to administration. The timeline, because they are doing it on their time, it was difficult to align them to when we were coming tonight, so we would want to call attention to that part in the handbook and come back to you in one of maybe the weeks probably that I'm presenting on that night, so we can couple, and then just to let you know that this would be an addendum to the already-approved school policy, and that we would just be presenting the new grading policy as it's approved at the administrative level, that we would then come to you all for approval. So that would be one of the biggest things in approval this evening of what you're seeing in front of you today. And Ms. Neves is going to just outline a couple of changes within that program of studies.
So I gave you every change that we made in the book, so I won't read through them all, because I even wrote the whys we did, what we did. I just, I think it's important to start with that it wasn't just the committee of us that were, that were working on this. This really started in our ILT teams, where they worked with their departments and got the information on what they wanted, changed, added, deleted, descriptions modified, all of that within their departments, and then they presented that to us, and we took those, and then the small committee made those edits, cleaned up the book, and just kind of put it all together. We spent a lot of time looking at other schools, what do they have, what, what do we have, what really should be in here? And we, there were some things that we should have had in here for a while that we realized weren't in here, so those are in here. We added in the district priority into our book, we, something as simple as the non-discrimination statement wasn't in there, and it's in there. So we really went through it with the fine-tooth comb, like Mr. Collins said. A couple of the big pieces that we added, in addition to the, looking at the courses, was our dual enrollment. We never had an explanation of that for the students to see, and, or the parents to see, and what was that about? So we added that in there. And in addition to that, we have the opportunity, through QuinSig, to offer two courses during the day, this upcoming year, that would fit into our social services pathway, so they are listed in that book as well. We added the Seal of Biliteracy, the nationally-recognized program that we're starting currently, but we added that into the book in how, just so parents again, and students can see what this is. The other big section that we had was the My Cap section, the My Career and Planning, My Career and Academic Plan. It really took a chunk of the book that we had, that wasn't really a course of studies, where the guidance department was explained, and that's where this really fits, on how the guidance team is going to work together through the use of Naviance and other tools to help our students get on a path that, you know, may not be going the college route. So that's new to this book as well. I, yeah.
Yeah, I want to point out as well that this team, along with several conversations with different stakeholders here in central office as well, we did spend time reviewing our program of studies to the Mass Corps in the state of Massachusetts under the DESI website, and we have aligned with that wholeheartedly and allowed that to be our guiding light, so to speak, in terms of what we offered and how we listed those courses, so that we are more aligned than with what DESI's expectations look like.
So rather than me going through them all, I was wondering if you have any questions for us that you would like us to ask, answer, sorry? Expand on.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, certainly. I, I appreciate you highlighting the areas that, you know, you'll come back to us on regarding the grading policy.
I think one of the bigger ones that wasn't in our book now, that we've had prior, was some type of accountability to tie to attendance, and then that, how do I earn that back? That's a piece that they're exploring as well, of how does attendance tie into that grading policy as well? So we don't know how they're coming to us with that, but that'll be something that they'll present.
I know that you all have to vote on this, but before, if I can just kind of recap our takeaways of what we would need to do next for you. We would want to go back and allow that team of teachers to complete their school policy around grading, present that to us for administrator approval, bring that back. In addition, if your approval comes tonight, in terms of our courses, which will not change, based on our alignment to Mass Corps, we would like to move forward with our registration process of our current in-house students and then our rising class of 2028. That's a big, big thing for us to go ahead and get started before our break, but we would then like to report back, of course, how that's going, because those are one-on-one meetings with counselors, and that's always a really neat thing to give kiddos, to take home to families, and to be able to be here and talk about what that looks like for kids, especially the class of 2028 coming up, because having that exposure the first time in planning for high school is really important, and really exciting as well. So that would be our takeaways, two big things. We would want to go ahead and start our registration process for 2425, and then set a time to come back with you and present what our teacher stakeholders have come up with in terms of their grading.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. When do you anticipate having the information that you need to come back?
So we will have it for, I believe, this first meeting, we should have it, the first meeting in April before break.
So it sounds like what we would be doing is approving, approving the program of studies, but not yet all of the language that's in the, the program, right?
Yes, minus the school grading policy, yep.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just want to thank Ms. Neves and her team. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this, really looking through and navigating, making sure alignment, so I appreciate the work that was involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you. It was nice, we had, it was Michelle Bigelow and Kim Granger that worked with me, and it was coming from three different angles. I feel like we hit everything, and, and we all looked at it differently, and all were able to, there were no arguments, there were no, like, we always said, no one's going to take offense, you know, to anything that we say. We all had a common end result, no matter what we did, so the team worked really well. So I'm happy with what, you know, what we all worked on together, so thank you.
Great. If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the Bartlett High School 2024 to 2025 Program of Studies, with the knowledge that we'll be updating the grading information at a later date.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Motion.
Ms. Blythe.
Member Adam McLeod.
Yes.
Member Nafra.
Yes.
Member what?
Yes.
Member what?
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you both, and thank you to Ms. Granger and Ms. Bigelow, too.
Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the out-of-state field trip, grade six to the Louvre Center for Arts in Woodstock, Connecticut.
Thank you. The middle school, Mr. Wright is looking for permission to take his students to the Louvre Center in Woodstock, Connecticut on March 27th, and we need school committee's approval. Sounds like a fun trip.
It's an annual trip, I think, right? This is something they've done before.
Opera, yep.
Yeah, great. Great opportunity to expose our students to the arts. Any questions or comments from the committee about this field trip? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adam McLeod.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Blythe.
Yes.
Member what?
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Hope they have a great time. The next item on the agenda is Policy AC, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. This will be the first reading.
In your packets, you should have copies of the original policy, and then what we currently had, and then the amended policy.
I see. First one is.
Yep.
Okay, any questions or comments from the committee about this? Okay, the next item is the first reading of Policy ACR, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. That's a duplicate? Is that the same? I'll take a look at what is in the packet here. I didn't catch that before.
This is ACR, and the other one was AC.
Is it the same title of the policy, though?
Look.
That's what I'm looking for here. Yeah.
It is, actually.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah, I'll need to take a deeper dive on those.
Yep.
Any other comments from the rest of the committee on that? Okay. Right, but the titles are the same, which is different. No, also in the documents themselves. Right, okay. Then we'll just move past that for now, and we'll come back to that maybe on the second The next item on the agenda is the first reading of Policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. I'm pausing for any comments from the committee, and otherwise, I'm going to continue to move forward. The next item is the first reading of Policy ACAB, sexual harassment. The next item is Policy ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability, first reading. Any questions or comments about any of those? The next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
Cut. We know. Put it out.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adam McLeod.
Yes.
Member Nafra.
Yes.
Member what?
Yes.
Member what?
Yeah.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.